Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the active school committee. You will start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any adjustments to our agenda tonight?
There are none and we will stay for executive session.
Okay. Comments from the public? None, okay. Then let's move on to number three, our celebration of learning volleyball and basketball.
So I'd like to introduce Kelsey Lazard Johnson, our athletic director, who will take it from here. Looks like you're using the screen, so I will move.
Hi, thank you. So I'll start with volleyball when it comes up. Oh, I forgot. Pretty. This is what I had set up in my classroom, the two screens. There we go. Okay, so I'm gonna start with volleyball. Our volleyball coach this year was Kalen Berry. She wasn't able to make it tonight, but she put together this wonderful slideshow that I'm going to share with you. As I click through the photos, I'll just share some things from the season. This starting photo is of all the eighth graders. I wasn't able to get my hands on the video, but they did make a video when they made this poster for their eighth grade night. And they all painted their hands and they went up and they did like number four signing out and things like that. For like their last home volleyball game as eighth graders, it was really cute to see. And there they are. And yeah, and their legs were all blue for that match that day as well. So we have some live action photos. We're able to make some nice improvements to our having home volleyball games this year. We never actually were able to host any home volleyball games last year. We had one game that was away. So this year we made some improvements, so we got a new net. And it was really great to see the girls host a volleyball game. They were really excited to be doing that. We also got to travel to more schools than we did last year. It was a really big learning experience. Volleyball is considered an extra mural, so everywhere we went, it was a little bit different. People had, you know, different ways that they ran it at their school, whether they had two matches going on at once or they had, here we have a smaller gym, so we had one match at a time. But our girls did really well. They won several of their games, their matches, and they tied a couple as well. I was super proud of them for their first full season. They did really, really well. I could see the confidence grow in the girls throughout the season. I was lucky enough to be able to drive their minibus to a couple of their away games. And I got to see them in action. And it was great to see the girls, especially with their serving, gain confidence throughout the season. I remember, I never played volleyball as a sport, but I remember doing it in PE class and I was terrified of serving. And just seeing the girls get more confident, seeing how frequently they were able to make it over the net comparatively at the beginning of the season was incredible. So volleyball girls, big congratulations to them on their first official full season and being super successful. So big congratulations to them. For basketball, we have a little twofer here. I do have our two basketball coaches here with us tonight. James Kittredge coached the boys' basketball team for us this year and Ally Lavassar coached the girls. They both did phenomenal. As a coach myself, just seeing the energy on the court, hearing from the players, it was great overall. The sounds from the players, they feel very successful in their season and they felt there's a lot of improvements. And they had a lot of fun and I know this because I interviewed most of them. I have a little interview video here for you now. Now, is the sound on? Yes. Okay, perfect. Because I won't know until the first video starts. Let it buffer for a second. I know what's happening. This happens in my classroom. Technology is not my friend today. This should remedy it a little bit.
I enjoyed the McDonald's trip to San Francisco. I enjoyed going to play with those. I enjoyed the bus trips going to the games. I enjoyed the whole basketball season.
The practice. Coach Mackay, I love Coach Mackay.
I joined McDonald's and all the basketball team.
I can be on my basketball skills and going to McDonald's with my boys.
I liked how we were all just like one big happy family and we got to talk to each other about anything we needed and I really got to improve on my shooting.
I got to meet some new people that I've never played with before. All the girls did good, including myself. We've all had a great season. Also, I learned something new and I learned a new skill on how to do shooting taught from Ms. Lavassar and James, which they're good coaches, both of them. And I'm just gonna miss playing for the girls next year. Something I liked was how we came close to like a lot of winning Friday games.
I liked going to the varsity basketball games.
I like playing basketball.
I liked improving on my dribbling.
I like the bus rides home.
Okay, so you can see there's a lot of positives coming out of the basketball season, a lot of smiles. McDonald's always a favorite, that always comes up every season. Definitely a highlight. I love that we can have a tradition, that we can continue with each of the sports teams and that they look forward to so much and it clearly creates some core memories for them. Also, another core memory that came up here, James, he's familiar with the athletic director in Sanford and was able to work with him and the varsity coach in Sanford and his team was able to go and watch some of the varsity games, which was really awesome. And, you know, he was really thinking about like where they're headed next, you know, making sure, you know, he can lead them in the right direction. Coach Lavassar, she really reached out in the school, you know, she talked to Dave Cody. She knew he had some basketball experience and he got to come in and go to a couple of practices with her teens and the girls definitely loved that. That was another thing that was highlighted in this video someone brought up was getting to practice with Mr. Cody. So big cheer for our basketball teams, big cheer for the coaches. I'm super proud of how all of our winter sports went, our volleyball, winter-spring sport. And can't wait for another year of basketball and volleyball in action. Basketball coaches, did you want to add anything?
I'll say some things.
I didn't compare or anything.
I have some notes, but I was reading an article last week that took a random sample of 100 teachers and it said that over 65% of them, their number one fear is public speaking, which is just hilarious because that's what we do all day long. So I am really terrified right now, but I wanted to kind of defend our O and A season because on paper doesn't look great. But we had a lot of really, really big successes that were really important to me and really important to the girls. So one was when we played Sanford, which is just, all of the schools that we play are much bigger than us, right? So it's really intimidating, they have a lot more resources. I remember when we pulled up to York, they had that machine that goes, it's over a $7,000 machine. It goes under the net and it pushes the ball back to them and my girls were like, what is that? Okay, it's okay, it's okay. And then one time when we were going to Wells, we pulled up and it was during their dismissal, right? And we just saw bus after bus after bus being dismissed. And I was like, girls, when you feel bad about yourself, just remember like they're pulling from a much bigger pool of athletes than we have, okay? And so some of the compliments we got, Massipisik, the coach was so kind to us and told us this was the best year that he's seen of Acton and that the girls, sorry, my voice is foggy, that they were scared of Acton for the first time ever and that made me feel really good. And then the Sanford coach shared with me that they had 37 girls try out for their basketball team and we had 11 girls most. So I was really proud that we stayed competitive with these huge schools. Some of my girls had never even touched a basketball before, so I was really, really proud of them. I was a high school athlete, so when I was coming into this season, I was thinking about what did I want to foster? And it was really like what they were saying, I felt so close to these girls. They were like my daughters for the season. So really proud of them and I was trying to foster good sportsmanship. That's something that can be really hard for teenagers and just foster, like just sticking with it and their stick to it. And as even, we lost a game to Wells by like, sorry, I'm getting sick, 40 points and they still, we left and their heads were held high. We ended every practice with three things that we could celebrate and three things that we could improve on in a little team circle and they always had the best things. They were like, wow, our passing was really on point today or we should really focus on bounce passes instead of chest passes next time. I'm like, great, they were coming up with things. So I'm really proud of them. I think that for a really small community, they really showed up and they held their heads high the whole season. So I hope I get, I'm thankful that I got the opportunity to coach at all. It's always been a dream, so thank you for letting me.
Thank you.
All right, James Kittredge, you guys probably know who I am. I do appreciate you guys letting me coach the boys' basketball team. I enjoyed coaching. I also was privileged enough to have an assistant coach. I kind of get to come on. He came from Sanford High School last year. It was Coach Mackay. Kids definitely grew to him. He was more at their level. I was more like, you know, teaching and more disciplined and got them to the point to learn and he definitely got a different level with them. Our team did really good. We were very successful for Acton. We won three games. We had additional three games that we lost that were within like single digits, so we definitely, we could have easily had six wins, probably on me. You know, just making a little bit, different adjustments probably would have had them. The support that Acton School gave, like with the crowd this year, I've never seen it here in any other sport. The gyms were like, they were full every game. People were standing up, there was no places to sit. So that was awesome to see, all the support. The kids were great. They definitely grew, they got a lot better. Another thing that was great is that we're able to use the bus, I took advantage of it. Being able to use one of those small buses, the kids liked it and we went to the varsity, one of their practices. We went to multiple games. A lot of the kids never even been to varsity games, not all their parents have the time to bring them to the game. So we went to, I think we went to three. It was good just so the kids got a feeling of the gym, you know, the atmosphere, you know, even just making sure that they make the right decisions while they're in the crowd, you know, because not all of them even been to places like that in that situation. Kids were respectful. I didn't see anything crazy like on the buses or anything and it was all good. But yeah, we spent a lot of time together. The kids definitely, they clicked, you know, they became closer and I had a fantastic time doing it. I'm also running spring, just like skills and drills and small groups. We think we had 11 kids, 11 boys sign up for it that are hopefully planning on playing middle school basketball next year. So we're just working on like dribbling and just not like a team thing, just literally just individual things to work on to hopefully get better. Because I saw the success that we had this year and it's possible for Acton to win three, four, five games and if they put in the time, they'll be able to do it. Like she said before, we're going against schools, like the team we beat Saco, they had 30 something, I think it was 34, 30, 32 or 34 kids come out and try out for their team and they took the best whatever, 12 kids and we won that game. So that was like unbelievable. But yeah, the kids did a great job and I appreciate you guys having me coach. Good job, James.
So one thing I did want to mention for these guys to go, if they're heading out is I just wanted to recognize Kelsey too as our AD. She's done a great job this year, been right on top of everything, communications, getting the games together. Kelsey, that interview that I thank you so much. Great season. All right, unless if you guys really want to sit through, you know, a bunch of other stuff, this is a great time to escape. You bet. Thanks again, guys.
Have a good night. Thanks, guys.
All right, that's great. It's awesome to hear. It's awesome to hear the positives from our athletics, from our teams and the positive responses from the kids and the coaches. That's great. Okay, let's move on to number four and that would be Mr. Ward, progress monitoring.
Thank you. I will move on to the screen here as well.
It's my coffee. French vanilla.
All right, thank you all. Been a little bit since I've had a progress monitoring update. And so this evening, I've got some numbers around parent-teacher conferences. From the March meeting, there was a question from the public around the NAEP testing. So I have some more details about what that is and its impact here. And some information on upcoming state assessments. So starting with the spring parent and teacher conferences, I've just got the numbers up there. No big surprises. You'll see that the numbers have dropped. So if you look at the final column, the conference percentage by cohort, the down by percentage is down from this fall. I don't have the numbers from last year, so I'm not comparing what the turnout looked like for parent-teacher conferences this spring versus last spring. This has been my experience in every school and district I've ever been in. Fall conferences tend to be much higher attended as parents are very concerned about how their kids are getting to know their teachers. They're off to a good start and by the time spring rolls around, they've already had a lot of communication with the teaching staff if there have been concerns or even successes. And so we generally do see those numbers come down. I would still say in my experience, having numbers in the 80 percentile for pre-K through five is still pretty good. There were years in my previous school, if I hit 72% of parent attendance at the middle school, I felt like we had a really busy spring. So those numbers are there. So the NAEP, as I said, this came up during the March meeting and it also came up at the public forum that we had a couple of weeks ago. And so I wanted to speak to it just a little bit. So it is the National Assessment of Educational Progress. The news will call it the nation's report card. It is a large assessment that measures academic performance of students across the entire country. Every student that takes this, takes the same exact test. The idea is that it provides a snapshot of student achievement in math, reading, science, and writing. It's a digital test, just like most of ours are these days on the computer. There are a handful of times where they'll issue paper-based tests to some districts that may not have the technology infrastructure, which believe it or not, still does exist across the country. And then there are no consequences or merits that are earned based on your scores. This is really just a way for the federal government to compare how students are doing across the country and compare state by state. So how does the score and reporting work? There are only three achievement levels, basic, proficient, and advanced. The hope is that you want the highest percentage of kids to be in proficient and advanced. Basic means that you're not at where they would expect you to be. So as I said, the scores allow comparison at the national and state levels. So if Maine wanted to look at New Hampshire and say, huh, you know, we're 5% of points ahead of you, clearly we're doing something much better. They could. I doubt they would do that though. District-specific data, not available. With the exception of 26 large urban districts that volunteered to be part of a trial this past testing. When I say large urban, I mean Boston. It's Boston, Atlanta, New York City, school districts that the city itself, it dwarfs like the entire state of Maine is what we're talking about. And again, consistent tests across all states, just to measure student performance. And so the reason this was in the news and I think the comments came up was how Maine performed. And Maine declined across multiple subjects and grade levels, really all of them, from the previous test. And so some historical context, prior to 2019, Maine was outperforming the national averages for reading and math. After 2019, Maine has kind of fallen back to the pack. And then this most recent score, as I have up here, it's the lowest that Maine has scored since 1992 in three of the four assessed categories. A lot of the prevailing belief that you've seen in the news and the talk among educators is that this has to be related to pandemic. It can't be a coincidence that 2019, our scores were okay and then all of a sudden, what happened in 2020 and all of our scores dropped? But it does not account for why Maine has dropped more than other states. And it's going to take someone much smarter than me, way more time than I have to try and dive into what those other causes may be. So if you're interested in the actual specific scores, this is what they were. So fourth grade and eighth grade are the two grade levels that were tested. In Maine, our average score was 210, the national average was 214. Maine's proficiency percentage was only 26%. In math, similar, average 233, below the national average of 237. Our proficiency was a little bit better, so about a third of Maine students who were tested were proficient or higher. And then in eighth grade, very much closer to the national average, you can see 261 to 262. Proficiency percentage is still down below 30%. And then eighth grade math, we actually performed just above the national average of 272, but was still down for the state of Maine. And only a quarter of our students in Maine were considered proficient in eighth grade math.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
When it's like the number, the first line, the 210, national average 214, how big is the range?
Oh, I really wish now that I had looked that up.
Because I'm thinking that what's the national average? Are they like 28% proficient?
Yeah, the national average is still.
So we're really right there at the national average.
Yeah, there's not a huge difference. So I don't have the range off the top of my head. I could certainly find that and figure it out for you. But no, the national average is not like 50% of students are proficient and Maine is down 26%.
Right.
It's more like 28, 29%.
Yeah, so it's not a huge gap.
No, it's not a huge gap. If I were in charge in the state of Maine, I would be more concerned with why we dropped so much more significantly than other states post-COVID. There has to be something about either our response to COVID or how our families were impacted by COVID that other states didn't have or didn't see quite to the same extent that we did. So that's where I would put my focus. Again, I'm not paid enough nor do I have the time to.
Does the state even get higher level information?
No, so that's a great question. So I actually contacted the state and said like, look, I know that you're not supposed to know. Do you actually know? Is there a way for us to find out? And she said, no, they get the same website that the public does. That's all they are given at the state level. If I knew somebody in the federal government, you know, high up, maybe I could get there, but I doubt it. No, they really don't want anybody to be able to pinpoint any small school or district and have them targeted for poor performance because it's not the intent of the test. They only want to be able to say, like as a country, we're finding that, you know, the Midwest scores extraordinarily highly in reading, but the Southeast, they're struggling. That's an area that we can look at, see what's going on in our area of the country that we might want to improve in these areas. They don't want to be able to have anybody, you know, target is not the right word, but they don't want to make it evident who it is. Which is why those trial districts are those huge urban centers that are larger population-wise in some states because you can't narrow it down to a handful of kiddos or schools within that district that may have been the problem.
And again, so like what you're showing there is not really what we're seeing here in Acton trending-wise.
So I'll speak to that a little bit more in an upcoming slide, but I would not to this extent know. So our upcoming state assessments will be in May, May through the year, which is grades three through eight. Math, May 5th, reading, May 7th. And we'll have three other days of makeups over the course of that week. The MEA science test, which is only grades five and eight, May 12th through 14th. And we'll also have a couple of makeup days. And just a note on the results, the DOE has shared that their anticipated results in July for individual student scores. We may have some school scores that we'll have access to prior to that date. But they always give us a date and it always ends up being later than that. And this is just for math and reading. There's no anticipated date yet for the science results because those are scored very differently. And then coming up, and this is, I think gets to the question that you were just asking CJ. The May, I will be talking about student achievement results for this school over the course of the year. And this again came from a commenter in the public forum about finding ways to share our achievement results since ours are not nearly as dire as the rest of the state of Maine. And so I've been working on putting that together over the past couple of weeks. So I'll have the most recent achievement data from the May through the year, which will be last spring's test, the MEA science from last spring's test, our NWA results from this fall, as well as the iReady diagnostic data that I had shared back in January. And I also got some information from iReady. They are doing a longitudinal study, so same group of students over a number of years to see how they're doing if they are just using the iReady curriculum. And I was able to compare a snapshot of our students against other students across the US who've also had this three-year period where we come out pretty favorably. So I'll be able to share that. And so I would say that some of those results will show us being around the state average. In some places we're above, a couple of places we're just slightly below. And then our growth data through iReady, which again compares across the United States is really quite good. So I'll have that together, share it with you folks at our May meeting and then we'll get it up on the school website too, so it'll be accessible to anybody who's interested. And then June, I'll have the end of year iReady diagnostic data for everybody but pre-K since they don't use it.
Great.
And that's all for me.
Is it our second or third year of that through-year assessment? Because they changed it, correct?
It's at, yeah, it's at least three.
Three, okay.
Pilot year, then the year before.
Yeah, because I remember we had the one year where we had the old test and the new test. You can't compare.
And even now, and also when I do this, the May presentation, I will also give a breakdown of those tests, the descriptors for what they actually measure, as well as showing our sample scores and the part that you want to look at when it comes to comparing our student performance against whether it's state or national.
Another comment on the iReady, we're moving into summative evaluation times for continuing contract teachers, which I've been doing, Brandon's had probationary teachers and continuing contract teachers. In November, we meet and we discuss student performance goals. Many, many times the teachers will tie their goals into their classroom iReady. That X percent of students will gain this much growth in ELA or math. And then in May, when we can see the results, we can measure that growth as part of their evaluation for the whole year. Thank you, Mr. Ward, very comprehensive.
Yes. All right, let's move on to number five and I'll look for motion to accept the consent agenda.
So move. Second. Any discussion? All favor?
Okay, and we'll start with our superintendent report from number six.
You bet. So my first piece is kind of a surprise. It could easily have been celebration of learning, but I found out about it after I printed the agenda and had already reached out to the athletic director about being celebration of learning. So I think I'll just ask Lindsay House to stand up and maybe come on over here and inform me what's going on.
Hello.
Hello.
So I coordinate and coach Odyssey of the Mind for the school. I did it last year as the first year and this year is our second. I have had two teams compete at the state level both years. And this year I actually had a team of fourth and fifth grade boys, there are four of them, and they placed second and have qualified to move on to world finals. I am beyond proud of them. I am beyond proud of both teams. They both have worked so hard this year and last year and they've made amazing. They both have worked so hard this year and last year and they've made amazing improvements from last year to this year. CJ's daughter Quinn was on one of them and they did amazing. They placed eighth out of fourteen in the most popular problem Odyssey offered this year. In total, between all of the divisions, there was over fifty teams competing in that problem alone. So to place eighth in their division was huge.
That's good.
The boys placed second and so we are now going to be doing lots of fundraising to get them to Michigan State University in May. We leave May twenty-first and we'll be there for four days. So I'm very excited and I'm very proud of them and happy to announce that to the school board.
Nice. Congratulations.
Yes, they did incredible. So they did, the specific team did the balsa wood structure problem where they had to build the structure out of a specific size weight balsa wood. And it had to weigh under eighteen grams and it held almost sixty pounds, which isn't, it's, it's a lot. And for their age group, that's a very high amount of weight to hold. So yeah, I was very proud of them. But we'll be at the town meeting this weekend. I've gotten permission from Jen Rue to set up a donation table. And the fifty-fifty proceeds will also be going to Odyssey this year. So you'll be seeing us out and about with different fundraisers and things like that. So clear your eyes out.
Nice.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Good job. Good job.
I do have just a couple of quick things. Also have, so the, the plan for the spring and, and getting everything ready for next year, what we usually do is we wait till the budget passes and then a schedule will be developed. Teacher assignments will be, will be developed. Room assignments, if anybody needs to move or if to make some changes will be done. That way Andy can get that work done over the summer. And lastly, a week from tomorrow was a half day of school and we go into April break. So just wanted to let everybody know that as well. And that's it for my report.
Any questions for John about his report, written or spoken? Any questions for any of the other administrators?
Paula, insurance? Holy cow.
Yeah, I was very happy about that.
They changed the numbers.
But on the flip side, we saved some money with that solar thing that we went away years ago.
Yeah, that was good. I saw that.
Okay, then let's move on to committee reports. And we'll start with policy committee, which was apparently very busy.
We were.
Yes.
So again, most of the, most of the policies were just small revisions as we go through for every ten years to look at them. One that we did a little bit, was a little bit bigger was the use of school facilities. That Andy had asked that we update that so that people can only ask to use the school after we approve our school calendar in the spring, so for the fall.
Know what is happening in the school on October twenty-seventh before we pass the school calendar. So now Pete's can say, ask me later. So they ask in February for October and he can say, ask after the school calendar is approved. So that was one big one. Not big, but more than just commas. And then the other one that we updated a little bit more than just commas was the concussions. So now if a, so the concussion policy was mostly about if students receive head injuries or concussions in the building or in, on the property. And we updated that to include a sentence about what they have to provide to us if they receive a concussion outside of school. So at home or at an outside sports practice, what they need to, what their doctor needs to send care of in order for them to be reintegrated back into classes and activities here.
Medical clearance.
Yeah. I think that was it for those. And then we had two first reads that were sent by the state that we had to add.
Okay. So do you want to make the motion on the ones that are going to be approved as revised?
I would like to make a motion that we accept IIB cohort and class size, IJOC, school volunteers, JFCI, student substance abuse, JFCIR, student substance abuse procedure, KGR and KGR two, community use of school facilities procedure, and JJIF, management of concussion and other head injuries, added to revise.
I'll second that. Been moved and seconded. Any questions about these?
A lot of words.
I know. I know. All in favor? Now you want to?
Uh, now I'll make the motion to accept ILD, education research, student submissions, surveys, analysis or evaluation. And I am be the exemption from required instruction to accept those for a first read.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Nice work ladies.
So Jackie's been doing a great job at filing those and keeping them, keeping track of everything and making updates. It's been great.
Okay, long range planning didn't meet?
No, we are going to meet after the budget vote so that we can see how the article on technology goes. If it gets approved and then we can make decisions from there.
All right.
Can I add for negotiations?
Yes, yes.
Finished negotiating? Paula put it in her report. We finished with the support staff and CJ has signed and we're just waiting for the support staff to sign.
All right then, let's move on to number eight, new business. And I'll come back to Mr. Ross.
Okay, just have a couple of quick new business items. The first one is just an update on the school budget process. As everybody's aware, the school budget was approved by the school committee. We had our forum that was pretty well attended on the twenty-seventh of March. And a couple of Q and A's there, which was good practice for us for probably a town meeting, which is on the twelfth, which is this Saturday. Andy will be here early to open up the building. The town's all set to come in and get everything ready to go. We'll have our town meeting that starts at nine on Saturday. School will go second. The town business will go first. I sent out an email, a text message as well, through Blackboard to parents on Tuesday night, mentioning that the upcoming vote. And then again, tonight at six-thirty and about an hour from now. Another one, well, that one will actually mention that childcare will be provided. Yeah, many, many, many thanks to Jennifer and Mary, Mary Lynn from Barney Yard. And she has somebody who's going to staff that for us, which is great. And we also thanks to Dan and Matt for pulling together live streaming, which is kind of neat. My mail that goes out tonight though, does specifically say there's a live stream of options, but you have to be here to vote. So, you know, somebody could live stream and I suppose and go, oh, it looks like something's coming up. I might go in. And I did find that as, as long as you're here and you come in and you register and you get your card, you're then able to vote. But if an article's being discussed, you have to wait for the next article. So that's good. If somebody were to, so not everybody has to be here at nine. If they choose to be here at nine, that's great. They get the whole meeting. But the live stream may help in that manner. So I think we're all, we're all set to go with the budget. Everything seems to be in place. And this year there isn't a power outage and a crazy snowstorm and wondering if we're going to open the school as a shelter versus for a job. How was last year? So I think we're in great shape. So just a quick update on that. The next thing, the last thing of the new business is there's a, there's a meeting tomorrow morning at eleven. There's a group of us called the design team, the design committee for pre-k. Because in the budget, the change for the budget this year is that we needed to make some tough choices and to move one of the pre-k teachers into the K-two group, we needed to cap pre-k at sixteen students. Cause it's eight to one. That's a state regulation. We have guidelines on class sizes, but the regulations for pre-k are pretty clear, eight to one. So we have a teacher and an ed tech and we can service up to sixteen. Right now, I believe we have eighteen, so we have a couple out there right now that we know of and we may have more. And the design team needs to really look at what are all the schools doing in regards to pre-k lotteries and slots that are available? What's best practice? How does it work? As well as a design that might be able to meet the needs of everybody, which might look like a different program. It might not be all day. It might be two half-days or something like that. Shannon Johansson, who's our pre-k instructor, will be at that meeting too, to help. It's really important to have her at the table. She's the expert. And then the rest of us can help in any fashion with what transportation might look like, what services look like, all those things. When we come up with a, a design that works, that we think will work. Okay? So that, the start of that is tomorrow at eleven and pre-k screening is coming up in early May. So we really want to get a handle on what we might want to do. So when parents ask, what's the plan? And this is all moving forward with a successful budget on Saturday that can then indicate what our next moves will be. Good? That's, that's about it on new business.
All right. Does anybody have anything else to bring up? No. And I will look for a motion to go into executive session as per one MRS A four oh five six A person that matters.
Five forty-three.
At five forty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, we'll take a minute and.